Good to start right here. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. We're gonna start right on with you this time.
Sure, absolutely.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as
we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Bless those with us tonight in person and those that are with us virtually. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
And pledge allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the peaceful, liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here. Those that have been here before, this is probably boring right here. I haven't got enough to read the statement. I've been told that I need to read the statement before each meeting. It's the same one you've heard every time before, okay? Citizens who wish to address the council in any manner may sign up prior to the meeting, that's what they should have seen this far, okay? They're located at the right end side of the second entrance right here. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting, but called upon, please state your name, address, for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Appreciate that. Also, understand that the city council appreciates the hearing for your comments, but state law requires that we cannot prohibit from, one, engaging in discussions other than providing a statement of specific fact, information, or reciting existing city policy, or taking any action other than directing staff to place the matter under future agenda. So if it's not on the agenda and you have a comment on it, we cannot. If it's on the agenda, we can discuss it. If it's not, we cannot. Does that make sense? Okay. There we go. We're gonna start up. First thing we're gonna start with here is we've got a volunteer here. Sarah, where are you? There you are. Please stand up here. She is, she's gonna head around right at our reading program this summer, and we certainly appreciate it, and I know you've got a report on it, okay?
Yes, sir. Hello, everybody. I'm Sarah Wood from Tarrytown 4-H Club here in Bell County. This past summer reading program over at Mary Ruth Briggs Library, I was in charge of the programs and the theme, and this year's theme was "Is Water Wet?", but it was all based around water. Not only Texas water, but water in general. And we had a total of 41 kids sign up.
Wow.
We had a total of four of my fellow 4-H water ambassadors for the state of Texas come to help. We had 22 total volunteers, three 4-H state ambassador photographers come to photograph the entire event. We had a lady from the Bell County Museum come and see one of the weeks as well. And at the conclusion of it, we were able to hand out, let's see, 10 small children's backpacks filled with school supplies such as coloring pencils, colors, there were some Kleenex in there, notebooks and folders, and we held, excuse me, handed out 19 larger backpacks. Now, each week, the average amount of kids that did come was around 17, maybe 18, depending on the day.
That's too good.
And all of our activities were based around water, obviously as it stated, but more specifically, water pollution, conservation, aquifers in Texas, natural parks waters, and rainfall, excuse me, rainfall in both rural and urban areas.
Great. Good job.
Thank you. Folks, I don't know if anybody even visited the reading program. I was able to make a few of them. That deal was me. I mean, they had, it was just all about water and the little kids. They did a great job. Sarah Wood would like to, you're an amazing volunteer. I want to present you with this plaque. I'm gonna read, I gotta read it, okay?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you for your outstanding contribution to Mark Point Resort 2021 Library Summer Reading Program. Is "Water Wet"? That was the name of the program on there. Have you read it, please? Four weeks?
Yes, sir.
Four weeks, okay. Program you plan to conduct for 35 registered summer participants was a complete success. Your caring heart and compassion brought life to everyone in the room and continues to shine long after their departure. It's people like you that make a difference and has made this place beautiful. If you're a great volunteer, it's hard to find, difficult to part with, and impossible to forgive. Thank you, Sarah, for your dedication to our youth and the future leaders of our community. Thank you very much.
All right.
And thank you all for your dedication for the United States President's Speaker of the Senate. Oh, not that person, okay.
Never mind, you were taking the gift card back.
The goodies are there.
Hey, Sarah, can I ask you something? How long have you volunteered at the summer reading program?
Well, since the program itself is for elementary, elementary kids. I started right after when I began middle school.
I have to say, I helped out at the summer reading program and watched this young lady grow up into the beautiful young lady she is today, and she is awesome. So we really appreciate you, Sarah.
Now, this was not only a agenda, but speaking of volunteers, my wife was here tonight, and she is my biggest volunteer to ever stand up. I would people that.
Woo-hoo!
She doesn't make many meetings, but if you thank her, you're, you have credit. You have no credit like the one we gave her. She keeps me straight and keeps me, keeps me thinking, and we don't always think the same way, but that's what makes life interesting, and that's what makes this guy fun, okay?
That's right.
Now, while we're on a roll with volunteers, okay, I would like to, Jim Ann, please stand up to the podium, please.
I'm one of you, Jim Ann.
Woo-hoo!
So while she's, while she's making her walk of fame.
Walk of fame or shame? Walk of fame.
I want to point out what kind of sparked this with staff and with us, and why we wanted to nominate Jim Ann Turkey as the volunteer of the, or the citizen of the year, is I looked at the plaque on the citizen of the year, and I didn't see her name on there, and that was extremely shocking. You know, both the goods, the bads, and the uglies, you get it all, and I think you have to embrace that, and citizens and volunteers and everybody. You know where you stand, and so, well deserved.
Okay.
And now he has something that he's gonna read, and we made sure that it is in very proclamation form.
Who checked our grammar? She checks our grammar.
Carrie is, Carrie is our, is our student.
You know, in discussion, we thought, what can we do for Jim Ann? Just send a bridge after her, but we didn't find one. So going zero for one, we decided, well, what's the next best thing? So we're looking at a plaque. How does that sound? It's just like before, I'm gonna have to read it, okay? But here, here it is, okay? Okay. Whereas, okay, a lot of whereas, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Whereas, our community represents one of many years of being as few individuals standing out with a caring contributions and vision. We have made the city a more important resort and a fine place to live and raise a family. Thank you. Start it there. Whereas, one of our citizens, Jim Ann Turkey, is such an individual who has epitomized leadership in our community for many years. Whereas, Ms. Turkey is instrumental in continuing the legacy of our library through circulation of books, periodicals, and voices of her passion to support readers of all ages. And whereas, no, whereas. Her dedication and commitment to volunteerism has ensured the success of multiple annual summer reading programs. Thank you, Sarah, right here. Has transferred communications and countless hours of updating and maintaining the city website. It keeps the city manager, you know, we all know, to check and track the city health and facilitation of weekly coffee with the city manager. But y'all haven't made those plates one more time. Whereas, her insights, insights, loyalty and self improvement, motivation, remain invaluable for our residents and citizens of Mark Point, too, and now, therefore, the city of Mark Point Resort decides to publicly recognize and show its appreciation of Jim Ann Turkey for the positive impact she makes in our community now and for years to come. So you're not off the hook yet, okay? Keep up. But, you know, we don't get too much. I did a screen, mayor of the city of Mark Point, of Bell County and the state of Texas, on the 14th day of September, 2021, to hear about the player Jim Ann Turkey as citizen of the year.
Well, you know I have to comment.
What's that?
Because I've known Jim Ann for years and years and years, and if you get out your dictionary and you look up volunteer, her picture's gonna be there, I guarantee it. She has had unsurpassed dedication to our city. She's been the heart and soul of our library, literally, for years. In fact, she resigned her board position, and she's still the go-to. I mean, and she's at every meeting. Today, she had us all stuffing surveys, which you'll get in the mail, and she headed up that group. Anything that she does enhances our city. A lot of people also don't know that she runs our website. You know, Dorothy Allen helps her. Jim Ann has been running our website since its inception, and she doesn't get a lot of recognition for that or a lot of credit, but it's a very difficult job to do. And just like they mentioned, she's our grammar patrol, so whenever we write something and we really want to clean it up, she's the one we send it to to clean up. And she's been helping Dalton with the city, the city coffees, so she is a wonderful person, and I am so proud of your accomplishments, and I'm so proud to call you my friend. You're very deserving.
Okay, we're gonna follow up. I heard you.
Oh, photo op.
I'm just overwhelmed. I may end up starting crying at the end of all, so thank you all very much. I appreciate it, and you have no enemies.
We appreciate you. Okay, we'll get along with our regular agenda now, and the first person on there is. Oh, Larry? Larry Hartman?
Yeah.
Everybody knows you, Mr. For record, we take your name into credit, please, sir.
Larry Hartman, 112 Great West Smith, Mark Point Resort, Texas, 765-13911.
That's sufficient.
Tell me when you start the time.
It was two minutes ago.
Two things. You know, we do the pledge, we used to do the pledge to the United States flag and the Texas flag, and I'm part of the Texas flag pledge, and I just would ask that be reinstated with your.
We're gonna do that, Larry, and we're gonna have a sound system on our next meeting, I believe, at least before December. We're gonna have a sound system in here, and we'll bring the Texas flag back in here also.
Thank you. Perfect. The second thing is, we want to manage our growth out here and manage, we want to get ahead of things. Two years ago approximately, we talked about the intersection with the schools growing in that, our own intersection in town, and I just wondered if we've gotten any results on that, because we were looking at either a four-way stop or a roundabout. If we're gonna do a study, I don't know.
We're gonna address some of that, some of that issue here later on in the meeting, Larry.
So, perfect, yeah. But that's, that's it right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I said that two minutes for you on the phone.
We'll save it for next time.
He can store them up, right? Accumulate them?
No.
Okay, Jim Ann, your last one on it, so you get to step back up.
Oh, God, buddy, thanks for bringing the hook in here. I just wanted to say, the city survey is ready to go out in the mail, and hopefully it will go out tomorrow or the next day, and I just wanted to thank the volunteers who, too, are sitting at one of these tables here, and one or two are in the audience, and for spending, I don't know, two or three hours today stuffing, sealing, and advertising. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, open up, flip for a motion on reading of the minute, that's our last minute.
Do you want to take them all at one time, Dennis?
Yeah, if you'd like to do, we can do both of them. Do them all at one time as you like.
I move for the adoption of the minutes as written for July 13th, the 3rd, and the 10th.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any decision? Do you vote? Talking carries, we're limited to a fifth. Okay, now, we're gonna open this up to a public hearing. We need one more public hearing on our tax rate, so this is the final hearing on it, and we will open up the hearing at 6:15. And if anybody has any comments, if they have any questions or whatever, this is the city tax rate that we, we have talked about, I'll give it now three sessions now, I guess. So if anybody has any questions or any thoughts about it, you're now the time to speak up. Okay, I'm gonna assume since no one has raised their hand, that there are no more comments, so we will close the session, go public session, the hearing at 6:16. Okay. Here we go. Down on item five, is they discuss a appropriate action on proposed tax rate for the 21, 21, 22 fiscal year ordinance, that 21-06. The council should have that information in front of you on the tax rate, which we have, believe you me, we have put a lot of hours into this stuff, so if there's not anything you, if you have any questions or statements that you would like to make.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 2021-06, setting the tax rate for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 at .6192.
As per hundred, as per hundred evaluation.
Right.
Get your little three.
We got a correction?
Yeah, no, just not, just read that verbatim by law, that's all the information.
Okay, okay, good. Gigi. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 61.92, which is effective by a 13.22% increase in the tax rate.
Do I hear it?
.6192.
.6192 per hundred or 6192 per couple?
Do I hear a second? Or two?
I'll say.
I'm gonna stay for voting on the next one, too.
Okay, okay. Why don't you take the voting one?
And I just added, I just wanted to add one thing, Dennis, if I might. On that tax rate, it, it, it's all looks foreign, and when you talk about 13%, so I'm kind of a bottom-line person, and Carrie is a great bottom-line person for me, because he gives me numbers, straight numbers. So what you're looking at, because this is, this is an increase in your taxes, and what you're looking at, at a $100,000 house is $23.40 more a year. $200,000 is $46.80. $300,000 is $70.20, and 400 is $93.60. So that's, that's what you're talking about, the tax, the tax rate. And I'll also add that the council dissolved the maintenance fees, which you paid, just that kind of puts money back in your pockets, and actually, we didn't, we didn't take action on it last year, but we didn't bill you for last year, so this will be two years of maintenance fees, but we did take action this year to dissolve them. So that way, everyone is, is paying for the revenue, everybody is paying equal tax rate, instead of part of the town paying for the maintenance fees and some of them paying homeowner's fees, but not, not directly to the city. So anyway, I'm kind of a bottom-line person, it's like, how's it gonna hit, hit my purse? So that's how it's gonna hit your purse.
That reading is what the state dictates?
Yes, I know, yeah.
And it sounds terrible.
Yeah, it does sound terrible, that's why I have to give my little numbers here.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Your vote? Vote your pass. Okay, moving right along here. We're gonna have item six, is it, is it just to take appropriate action on a resolution 21-17 budget amendment? And this is for all the 21 budget year, fiscal year. Dalton, I'm gonna let you take this right here. This is a pretty neat deal, I think, but anyway, I'm gonna let him bring it up.
So two things, in your, in your package, you're gonna see two new finance documents. One is the budget, the approved budget proof report, which shows kind of a very simplistic bottom-line revenue expenditures across the city. Thank you, Carrie. The other one is our bank and investment account balances, and kind of where we stand in just rate and everything, just really from a bottom-line perspective. So this is in front of the normal GL that we hand out. You know, one of the things that we really wanted to kind of point out, and as Carrie diligently works through all of this, we had a great year. You know, I kind of talked about before, we made some, cuts is not the right word, but we really kind of polished up some things this year, you know, kind of addressed some plans, reevaluated some planning, and kind of re-adjusted some stuff, which really kind of opened up some things. Some of the challenges that we're facing, not just in our industry, but in all the industries, is, one, labor, and two, product or services, mostly product. And so we're having trouble across the board getting stuff. You know, I don't know if everybody noticed, which we'll talk about later, but you know, roads are, the roads that were cut out are done, we got asphalt. We had to get eight tons from Kempner, Texas, if that tells you anything. So they, so any material is just gouging. So what this budget amendment is really asking for is, is we're doing really well, we've got about three weeks left on this budget, and two big things that we wanted to focus on for our residents is, one, was getting license plate cameras, something that has been discussed, I think, before my time, and this is a great opportunity to, you know, to get it now, get some material purchased, that way we can start, one, collecting data, to start seeing, you know, what's, what's some of the traffic patterns, the, you know, get some of the studies done, you know, I mean, for intersections, but also, too, for the safety of our residents and our community. We can go ahead and get it now, since it's a material item, and start getting this process, you know, purchase this budget here. The other one is a server. Our server is eight years old. Some of our implementation of some new software, which is gonna help make our staff, you know, more, our team more efficient in certain areas, we're looking at some of our permitting processes and streamlining some of those to make it more user-friendly, minimize, you know, points of failure, and then, of course, our payroll software, our finance software and everything else that we're really, our GIS, we don't want to put anything on the old server, well, because it's eight years old, and so we want to get another server up and running, and getting these products ordered now just gets us a few weeks ahead of the game, and getting them ordered, and starting to get them up and running, that way we can really kind of kick off our cover one, you know, as a fresh start. We don't know. And so that's kind of where we, you know, we got quotes, we're addressing some of those, trying to figure out where we can get them, what we can get them, but we just don't know right now. So that's some of our biggest.
Are they hard numbers?
Those are, those are conservatively hard numbers, yes.
The cameras are, like Dalton said, are served a couple of purposes. First of all, it's kind of gives us an idea of our traffic count going through the intersection, so we kind of know what, who actually is coming through because of new high school. It certainly has increased, and most of y'all probably, I'm not telling you anything there. Also, it takes a picture or has a record of all the vehicles that come through, the three points, is that right, Dalton? Three points?
That's Todd's question, and a sheet's question, four points.
Four points? Okay, so if, we'll have, on video, every vehicle has to do those cameras, so if there is any type of disturbance or anything at night, there's a possibility that we can trace it if somebody, if somebody knows what kind of vehicle it was. We can go back to it and find out what vehicle was here at that given time, and maybe, and I, I guess it gets license plate numbers, but it's not. So anyway, it's a city center surveillance, it's just another thing for our citizens to give us, I think, just a bit more protection. And so anyway, I like the idea.
Were these cars replaced?
So they replaced the remaining arteries coming in, and then possibly the fourth backpack through a wire.
Tara? Is that it?
Like a Tara?
Yeah. So I'm assuming they're wireless?
Uh, yes, so, yes.
Okay, so they, we have the ability to move and relocate if we're selling it off.
We had a presentation, gosh, might have even been a couple of years ago, by our police department, and we were, we were all excited about it.
It's not really that expensive when it's all paid, and really they're not.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up now. I didn't do the presentation, said this was kind of people in my time on it, and I apologize, I should have, I know we have some numbers here, but Todd wants to, or Matt wants to do a sous-tante, ad hoc presentation on it.
If anybody had any questions, they would ask.
Come on up to the podium, Tom.
Speech? I'm sorry, I'm on camera. It's not COVID.
He's not shy.
So it's the flock camera system. The way it works is, they're started base, stolen, they'll be attached to the remaining arteries and the backpack through the Tara. It takes photos of a car coming through now, so it has a picture of the license plate in the front or rear and the number for a stand night. We have signed a M O U and a contract with the state of Texas, so as soon as it takes a photo, it starts tracking through the M O system, looking for stolen. The only time it will work is when a vehicle comes through, stolen vehicle, if not, just blocks of your server, not cars that went through, and it's stored in that base. So that way, if we have any stolen vehicles, or any development that's stolen, we can see what's taken through, what time, that way it helps us also find out where we did the camera, where they're from, where the cameras, we also have a name system for people in this area. In addition to the four, nine ones within X month, we'll have seven mobile, each car will be able to also run out the ours through our cameras. We'll have a total of about 11 cameras going.
So the stationary camera there for surveillance only, not for enforcement, right?
So the mobile ones will be in for enforcement, the stationary right now. So we could, but it's just too much data with where they're gonna be set up. So I think, I think that we, me and Catherine, with that numbers, on F 2043, in a 50-minute span, in our busiest day, you have about 150 cars going through on just one road, that would be the possible look at expired registration. It's more just trying to look for stolen vehicles and then why, where they went, where they went down.
Now, Todd, if somebody was doing something at the park, you know, because that's kind of been a problem area, and a witness said it was a black border, say, and, and the time that we were there was X amount of time, like they're gone when y'all get.
So that's how it's going to hit your purse.
That reading is what the state dictates?
Yes, I know, yeah.
And it sounds terrible.
Yeah, it does sound terrible. That's why I have to give my little numbers here.
Hold your favor. Hi, hi.
Hi.
You're opposed? Vote your pass. Okay, moving right along here. We're going to have item six, the, the decision to take appropriate action on a resolution twenty-one dash seventeen budget amendment. This is for all the twenty-one budget year, fiscal year. Dalton, I'm going to let you take this right here. This is a pretty neat deal, I think. Anyway, I'm going to let him bring it up.
So two things, in your, in your package, you're going to see two new finance documents. One is the budget, the approved budget proof report, which shows kind of a very simplistic bottom line revenue expenditures across the city. Thank you, Kerry. The other one is our bank and investment account balances and kind of where we stand in just rate and everything, just really from a bottom line perspective. So this is in front of the normal GL that we, we hand out. You know, one of the things that we really wanted to kind of point out, and as Kerry diligently works through all of this, we had a great year. You know, I kind of talked about before, we made some, cuts is not the right word, but we really kind of polished up some things this year, you know, kind of addressed some plans, reevaluated some planning and kind of re-adjusted some stuff, which really kind of opened up, up some things. Some of the challenges that we're facing, not just in our industry, but in all the industries, is one, labor, and two, product or services, mostly product. And so we're having trouble across the board getting stuff. You know, I, I don't know if everybody noticed, which we'll talk about later, but you know, roads are, the roads that were cut out are done. We've got asphalt. We had to get eight tons from Kempner, Texas, if that tells you anything. So they, so any material is just guaranteed. So what this budget amendment is, is really asking for is, is we're doing really well, we've got about three weeks left on this budget. And two big things that we wanted to focus on for our residents is, one was getting license plate cameras, something that has been discussed, I think, before my time. And this is a great opportunity to, you know, to get it now, get some material purchased. That way, we can start, one, collecting data, to start seeing, you know, what, what some of the traffic patterns, the, you know, get some of the studies done, you know, I need for intersections, but also too, for the safety of our residents in our community. We can go ahead and get it now, since it's a material item, and start getting this process, you know, purchased this budget year. The other one is a server. Our server is eight years old. Some of our implementation of some new software, which is going to help make our staff, you know, more, our team more efficient in certain areas. We're looking at some of our permitting processes and streamlining some of those to make them more user friendly, minimize, you know, points of failure. And, and then of course, our payroll software, our finance software and everything else that we're really, our GIS, we don't want to put anything on the old server, well, because it's eight years old. And so we want to get another server up and running. And getting these products ordered now just gets us a few weeks ahead of the game and getting them ordered and starting to get them up and running. That way, we can really kind of kick off our cover one, you know, as a fresh start.
What's waiting for me?
We don't know. And so that's kind of where we, you know, we, we got quotes, we're, we're addressing some of those, trying to figure out where we can get them, what we can get them, but we just don't know right now. So that's some of our biggest.
Those are hard numbers?
Those are, those are, those are considerably hard numbers, yes.
The, the cameras are, like Dalton said, they serve a couple of purposes. First of all, it's kind of gives us an idea of our traffic count going through the intersection, so we kind of know what, who actually is coming through because of new high school. It certainly has increased, if most of you are probably, I'm not telling you anything there. Also, it takes a picture or has a record of all the vehicles that come through, the, I think three points, is that right, Dalton? Three points?
That, that's Todd question, and a sheet's question, four points.
Four points? Okay. So if, we'll have, on video, every vehicle has to do those cameras, so if there is any type of disturbance or anything at night, there's a possibility that we can trace it if somebody, if somebody knows what kind of vehicle it was. We can go back to it and find out what vehicle was here at that given time, maybe, and I, I guess it gets license plate numbers, but it's not.
It's a transport vehicle.
So anyway, it's a city center surveillance, it's a, just a, another thing for our citizens that gives us, I think, just a bit more protection. And, so anyway, I, I like the idea.
So where are these cameras replaced?
So they're replaced, the remaining arteries come in, and then possibly the fourth cut back through a wire. Tara, is that it?
Like a Tara?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming they're wireless?
Uh, yes, yes.
So they, we have the ability to move and relocate if we sell it, Todd?
We had a presentation, gosh, might have even been a couple of years ago, by our police department, and we were, we were all excited about it.
They're not really that expensive when it's all paid, are they?
No.
Really, they're not.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up now. I, I didn't do the presentation, said this, this was kind of people in my time on it. And I apologize, I should have, I know we have some numbers here. But Todd wants to, or Matt wants to do a sousante ad hoc presentation on it.
Does anybody have any questions? What I?
Come on up to the podium, Todd.
Speech?
I'm sorry, I'm going with the camera, not COVID.
He's not shy.
So it's the block camera system. The way it works is their sergeant base, stolen, they'll be attached to the remaining arteries and they cut back through the Tara. It takes photos of a good car coming here and out. So it has a picture of the license plate in the front or rear and the angle for a stand height. We have signed a MOU and a contract with the state of Texas, so as soon as it takes a photo, it starts tracking through the M system, looking for stolen. The only time it will be posted, when a vehicle comes through, it's stolen vehicle, if not just a block or server, the number of cars that went through and it's stored in that base. So that way, if we have any stolen vehicles, or any development that's stolen, we can see what's escaped through, what time. That way, it helps us also find out where we did, and where we're going to bring cameras in. This is, we also have an agency that people like this area. In addition to the four, nine ones within X month, we'll have seven mobile. Each car will be able to also run LPRs through our cameras. So we'll have a total of about eleven cameras going. That's odd.
So these stationary cameras are there for surveillance only, not for enforcement, right?
So the, the mobile ones will be in for enforcement, these stationary right now. So we could, but this is, this is just too much data with where they're going to be set up. So I think, I think that we, me and Catherine want that numbers on F twenty-four three, in a fifty minute span, in our busiest day, you have about a hundred and fifty cars going through on just one road, that would be the possible look at expired registration. So it's more just trying to look for stolen vehicles and then why, where they went, where they left down.
Now, Todd, if somebody was doing something at the park, you know, because that's kind of been a problem area, and a witness said it was a black border, say, and, and the time that we were there was X amount of time, like they're gone when y'all get there. And so they have the time and they have the description, what can you do with that?
So if we get a timeframe, we get both in that database, what does give us, if someone says, man, it's this vehicle they left going on F twenty-four three, at the time, we get full of data. What does give us, if there was a crime committed or damage to the park, we can go and find the registered owner, which allows us to start the process of checking down with the driver.
Okay.
So it has DVR.
And there's also some talk of some of the subdivision to actually finding their own cameras into the same system, the top system. That's going to be under our time. And the way that works is, we won't have access to those cameras, but if something happens in their subdivision, then we can go and ask for it, but they're going to be private.
Is anything posted? No, okay.
Nothing's posted.
I would just say that can be a good deterrent, too, if somebody's coming through the city and knows that, you know.
Actually, you'd be surprised how many cities our businesses have LPR readers, and they don't post it, because.
They want to catch them.
Yeah. But these are parts you melt this away.
Yeah, you would be surprised how many times your license plate has been, a license plate where you're parked out before you're out.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
No, P D is, P D is also looking at, too, you know, some, some additional deterrence of other passive, you know, type opportunities, you know, that we can, you know, bring to the city, you know, both for the data tracking standpoint, but also some of just those risk mitigating things, that they are looking into some other options that we'll, we'll present in council at a certain time.
So it's not like it gets you, it's more like prevention slash investigative tool, but also, like you said, data. If you can find out where our hot spots are, the traffic flow, speeding, the competition that was downloaded, what do you call it?
Traffic. The, the speed competition side?
Yeah, the high tech speed competition side. That's definitely where we can say, hey, we, you guys speed it up at this point, but this is more just an investigative tool.
So it's more of a safety, it's more of a safety tool for our citizens, it's not a gotcha Big Brother?
Yeah, for, for safety for our citizens and the region. These are, these are tools that all cities can use, both on the human trafficking side and drug interaction side. It's not something that can just be pulled as a foil to, you know, to pull data, you just, there's, there's the civil component to it that is protected with confidentiality, you know, that law enforcement has, so.
Basically, it has to have a law enforcement agency like you have, so if you don't, it will.
Yes, so not, not Big Brother, definitely something just for the city.
Yeah, that's not how I interpreted it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not, I don't, some, some do, but.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Any, any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. Everybody's going to benefit from it.
Yeah. Do you need, I'm, just, just all voting, any questions? Don, or you're just sort of, or did you, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, how many stolen cars we have here?
Oh. What's this to do with? You going to cross factor here?
Hi, can I have a beer?
Oh.
I was just curious if there was a big problem with stolen cars in our area.
Stolen cars in the area, is it a big problem, or is it kind of an average problem, or a?
We have one, uh, one, just, just a couple of weeks ago, the last time before that, we had three stolen in one night, and one dropped off from another agency. So in the last year, we've had four taken from us and one dropped off. We're covering all. Yeah, and they've all been recovered within a matter of days. But with this system, with the help of this system, it will give us a lot more ability to track down which way they went. And then also, if they're not using stolen vehicles to come into the city, then we have an arrow down the timeframe of, of a point of contact that we'll look at. So if you're using your own vehicle to come into the city, commit crime between hours three and five in the morning, where we don't have much traffic, then we can narrow that timeframe down to have a lot less people to go look for and have a lead, at least, of somebody to go talk to.
And you did say there's link to a state database that, that is linked to other LPR systems, have the same systems, so they can kind of pattern.
Yes, so if somebody in the city is wanting to hide out here, and they caught one of the license plate cameras, and they're, they're fugitive, they can't be tracked to our area, and then at least they'll know some, what and where they're going frequently, so they can locate as far as the area.
You have more to say, or are you voting? You ready? Rodney, you second?
I'll second if you want. John, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And to be opposed? Make your pass. Okay. Member item number seven has the accessory building request, an update since the last, you know, July thirteenth.
All right, so I, I just did a kind of a handout, I typed this up yesterday or the day before, I can't remember, my days are writing together. But it kind of takes our zoning ordinances into, into why we kind of went this direction with Mr. Boni's property that, that we had able to last meeting. You know, contiguous was obviously one of the words that kind of came up as, as far as the immediate direction that we're kind of going. Through further staff research on this, we found some other ones in, in the zoning that defined a building site. And the building site being adjacent, with definitions of adjacent, and building site being directly abutting up to not separated by an easement or road or anything. So in, in this, where, in, in, the word, the definition of contiguous is also in chapter ten of our ordinances, that does also, you know, state that contiguous means adjacent property, which again is misleading, because it's adjacent, whose property lines are shared or separated by home, street, alley, easement or right play. So there's kind of two approaches, and I kind of tried to do the ideal scenario of two, two lots or two parcels abutting directly up to each other, and how that situation could potentially apply to our definition in the, in the ordinances of contiguous separated by an easement. And then, of course, explain the current issue and then really kind of the analysis. So in Mr. Boni's case, you know, we kind of did a litmus test of this to see what would I, be ideal to kind of put a solution. And, and I'll be, you know, directly transparent on this, you know, with this, you know, we kind of brought up, well, let's not worry about contiguous, let's just submit as is without, you know, my, the property being contiguous on this, and let's just do it as it stands. And I was very honest with them, saying that, no, that would completely go against our ordinances, because the only time you can build an accessory building is either in conjunction with a single family residential home, or after a single family residential home has had a CO, but not in lieu of or without a main building. The whole consideration of this kind of variance is, the variance is, do we want to accept the word contiguous in this case of if his properties were directly abutted up to each other, not separated by an easement, but directly abutted, would the, you know, would the, his project be acceptable based off of our ordinances? Because it's not separated by green easement, our definition of contiguous says, well, he does own property here, because if his property didn't exist, this would not be a factor at all. But because he owns a property that is technically contiguous by definition, would the, the variance or contiguous, would that apply in council's eyes for a building site, which would then create a building site of his two truly adjacent parcels combined as one parcel that would allow a single family resident building to be built on in the future, in the future, period? So it's complicated, and I'm definitely not making it any easier, I apologize, it's been a long day. But in the same situation, if the easement wasn't there, would council approve the project of letting Mr. Boni replat and resurvey the parcel, to put his, his accessory building on there? And the re, the purpose of the re, the conditional replat would be, this mitigates any potential issue of just selling that property in itself, it would allow him to put a, the accessory building on there, and then if he ever did sell, the new owner would have to put a residential structure on there. It basically just kind of mitigates some risk on, on trying to sell the, the par, the parcel with just building on.
Well, I'm not real clear. So are you saying we'll take contiguous out of it, which I, this definitely doesn't meet the definition of contiguous, but are you saying that looking at the ordinance itself, because you've got to construct the accessory buildings with a main home or homestead on it, it would be denied on that principle alone?
Correct, if, correct.
Okay, so we've got to know, it would not be approved whether it was contiguous or not?
Yeah, so.
So then to pile on, it's not contiguous, but.
Yeah, so, well, and so, so based off of just the two parcels itself, that he wants to build the, the accessory building on, if it stood alone, where he was just wanting to do that, the answer would be no, whether he replatted, resurveyed or not. The variance would be based off of our current and the ordinance definition of contiguous, which does say separated by. So that's where the things get confusing. So, so kind of where the direction that, that council kind of goes is, because he owns the property that is on the other side and, and contiguous based off of City of Morey's Point's current ordinance, in the chapter fourteen zoning, or sorry, in the chapter ten subdivision regulation, then would, would the variance be approved to do the building site on the other contiguous property? If not, and the answer is no, you know, that's a decision that council has to make, then, then really going forward, we need to either remove or redefine where contiguous to fit in, and basically say that no matter what, anywhere in the city, contiguous, adjacent, abutting are, are all the exact same, same criminality. But based off of the current, our current ordinances now, it, it could go either way. It could go either way. You know, I, I basically was like, look, if, if his, if he didn't own property on the other side, and I, I kind of use my property as an example, I have a separate parcel that is directly abutted up to it. If I was going to put an accessory building on, technically by the ordinance, I can do it, so long as I ever sold that parcel separately, I'd have to remove, you know, say, building. So if I take my same property, separate that by an easement, I can now, you know, no longer technically do that, because a building site is defined as, you know, not separated by, directly abutting to. But contiguous definition is in our ordinance that says contiguous is separated by a road street or easement. So that's kind of where the variance plays in, using.
But then the zoning comes back and says not separated by an easement or road, so it kind of contradicts itself.
Correct, so there's some contradictory definitions within.
So I, I think we do need to clean that up, one or the other. I, I, the zoning to me always seems like a little bit stronger, but.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm still hearing, if this, if, if this was right adjacent to him, I mean, in the scenario we have, we still would not have approved it.
Well, so, and, and so if, if his land, let's say there was no easement, his land was directly abutted up, I, I think the question would be is, would the building that he's putting on there be acceptable? And I think the answer is yes, I think it falls in line with our, with our ordinances, with our variances, or with our ordinances, with our setbacks, with, with everything. The only thing that would have been in question related to this project would probably be the driveway or the, the, the improved.
But he's not on the main building site?
But, uh, correct.
In that case, he would.
In that case, he would be on the main building site. In this, in this particular unique case, he's contiguous by our definition, which would then not be on the main building site by definition. And so the variances, really, do we want to accept the easement as contiguous, or is this something that, that we need to pretty much say, we agree that contiguous, abutting, adjacent are all the same definitions, and then basically go back to our ordinances and, and then bring that back and update those. Or do, do we say? Now, I, I kind of put a litmus test to this and said, okay, if there is any other situation in the city, you know, potentially that, that this could come up. And really, it kind of answered itself. I mean, unless there's an extreme exact situation, you know, if somebody came to us and said, well, if I, I want to, you know, put these flats together and resurvey and make this one flat, and I want to put an accessory building on it, without a single family home, can I do it? No, because there's no other property around that they own, and, you know, and so it, it kind of, not say that something else could come up, but in, in another situation, without really getting complicated, it doesn't really, you know, I don't see, foresee it opening Pandora's box on, on everybody submitting accessory buildings on vacant lands that are not, not truly either contiguous by our definition or adjacent or. But again, this really, as far as council's decision, I, I think, and, and Mr. Boni is here, I mean, I, I will let him kind of speak on this if he wants. I, I know it's kind of a really a play on, on verbiage at this point, and just kind of the contradictory language. I think this is kind of one of those moments that we kind of just have to look, or council have to kind of decide, saying, you know, which direction do we kind of want to go? And go from there.
Does the council have questions? I mean, a lot of questions, Joe, what do you all want?
I have questions. If I'm understanding this correctly, if we, if we say that this is contiguous, and because of the Green Bill, and we allow this accessory building to go on its property, then if he decides to sell property in the future, these two lots would have to be sold at one?
Okay.
So how can we say, you build a building over here, and then ten years from now, we're going to tell him, you can't sell this property, we should go out?
Well, so basically, the, the contingency on the variance was he resurveys or replats this whole thing in one?
Sure.
And, and then, so really, there's, so to answer customer versus, you know, question is, there's two, two guiding principles on that. One, it's kind of that, that good faith of, hey, you replat, there's a lot of property where if you're going to sell it, you're forced to sell your entire parcel. Two, by ordinance, any accessory building on another parcel, not on the main building site, has to be removed. So ideally, if that doesn't happen during the selling process or the, during that process, ideally, that building's going to have to come down by law, and at that point, there's, there's ground that the city authorized. So using my property as an example, if I go in and put up a building on my adjacent abutted property, and I go and try to sell that parcel by itself, I have to remove everything on that lot. So it's kind of a twofold.
And then you need somebody to enforce it.
Right.
To get it down, which could be a problem, because the lending institutions may not see that as a.
Well, and so that, so, and unfortunately, I mean, you know, when it comes to that, like anything, there's always going to be those, those, what if challenges of litigation and kind of those civil things, but.
Would you doubt that anybody would buy that lot just for, just for the accessory building?
I can, I can tell you that the reason, the reason that we wrote the ordinance, just a little bit of history, to say that it had to be on the main dwelling site, or if it wasn't, that it could not be sold separately, was for that reason, Dennis. They actually had a place that put, on one lot, they put their house, on the other lot, they put their big accessory building. And they sold the accessory building, and so someone bought an accessory building, which probably was used commercially or whatever, it just, so, so that's the reason that we kind of tightened that up, so we didn't have those issues.
Yeah, and, and so, like, like I said, I mean, there, I, there's really no right or wrong kind of way, I think, really for staff perspective, the biggest thing, you know, for us is, we obviously know that definition, verbiage, you know, kind of needs to just get, 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 get consistent at whatever direction council goes with that, and we'll absolutely work on that, you know, after this. And we're going to have a lot more of that, you know, of others that are going to come up, you know, where we're going to, you know, have similar or different situations with this, so. That's kind of.
I feel like this is a good plan, and it's going to be well done, and it's going to be well built. Can I go back to what Donna said? I, I think the reason why we did what we did is to kind of eliminate the bad actor that wanted to come in and do what we don't want to do. You're, you're the exception to that rule. And, and I guess it's, it's hard to look at the merits of, of the ordinance and, and not, not, I guess I'm just, I have hard time trying to come up or figure out a way, can't, can't stray away from the ordinance, right? And, and again, I'm just getting up and going, I'm confused. Because I know this is, this, this is a good thing for what you're trying to do, but if, if we do it, if we've done something that would open a door for somebody to do something and then come in and exploit.
No, and I, I agree a hundred percent. And this one, this one has been challenging, and, you know, for us, you know, the staff as well, because there's a lot of challenging ones, you know, and there's a lot of options and directions that this could go. You know, to, to the point of this, even outside of just this, and I think it's important, I've, I've talked with a lot of residents about it, the Band-Aids coming off, and, you know, these are situations where we are pulling Band-Aid off, and it's not quite there, we've got to figure out, you know, kind of, you know, do we rip it the rest of the way off? Can we take our time? And taking our time is not the answer, we don't want to keep that for very. And, and taking our time is not the answer, we don't want to keep that proverbial hand down the road.
Well, well...
But it is, it is tough, and I think, so I think...
We have to be very careful, because like Robbie pointed, I've known Mr. Boney for years, he's an exceptional man, honest, and he would do whatever he told us he was going to do. I have no doubt he would do it and build it beautifully and everything else. Our problem is we can't be arbitrary, uh, you know, arbitrary and capricious with how we do this, because we, we have another one stand up and we're like, you know, well, why aren't you approving it? Just because Donna knew Mr. Boney for 20 something years, you approve Mr. Boney's, why aren't you approving mine?
And so from, so from, so my, and, and I've had, you know, very honest conversations with Mr. Boney about it, and my objective stance from staff on this, the only reason why this is coming to the table is because our ordinance does say contiguous, separated by easement, road, et cetera. And that is, and because his property does fall in line with our definition of that and the situation with those, you know, contingent variances, um, I, I mean, a game changer on this for me would be is, let's say he didn't own that property, you know, to the, to the left or right of him, you know, to put those parcels together. I, I mean, I, I think honestly...
If we approved it this way, we could always change the ordinance or, and you're saying after that, and you have three, three to find each of them, right?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily just capri, I mean, and Neil, contiguous, your definition from a couple of months ago when you were talking to us was touching, bordering. So he's, as our attorney, he's telling us this is his definition of contiguous. And, um, my problem, my, you know, my problem is we are opening a door. We are opening a door to anyone who owns property with an easement separating them. We cannot say, we're going to approve Mr. Boney's, but we're not going to approve Mr. Johnson's. And that's my thing, not that we wouldn't, Robbie, but, but, um, you know, my point is if, if this is, if this is messy, let's clean it up, but let's not, in, in my opinion, you don't, you don't approve something that your ordinances aren't backing you up on. If we've got an ordinance that isn't real good or we need cleanup, let's do the cleanup, but I'm not for, uh, doing it ahead of time and then going back and cleaning it up.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, um, to me, we may, we may need to do a little cleanup, but, I mean, the attorney has told us what the definition of contiguous is, and that's my definition contiguous, um, and that's, that's Webster's definition of contiguous.
Yeah, and, and again, the only, the only road that, that, as far as just the objective side is when you pull up, you know, the City of Morgue's Point's ordinance, and you pull up the definition contiguous, it's what's on this paper. And so, so if...
But, but once again, we're in conflict because the subdivision regulation says one thing and our zoning says it cannot be separated.
Correct, correct.
So, so it isn't that we're saying this can be done, okay?
No, 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 but that, no, and that's why I just objectively wanted to bring up that, that there is that conflict, and, and this is kind of that moment that council has to say, in this conflict, based off of city, you know, recommendations, based off of staff recommendations, the reason why we brought this objectively to this was because of our current situation, which has obviously, you know, created this, this conflict, and now we just need to say, okay, in this conflict, which direction do we want to go, and then we can clean up after that.
And the other thing is if Mr. Boney sells his house and sells it together, like I'm sure he would do, which would be the right thing to do, somebody else moves in, they don't know that that's part of it. I mean, so, uh, we, we, to me, we need to, and I, and I'm all for bending these things the best way we can. I mean, you know, I've talked to Mr. Boney a couple of times on the phone and, and, um, I mean, we really need to help our citizens out here, but I'm just, I'm just not one for, we're talking about two different things in my opinion that we're kind of violating. And, um, I say, I mean, my opinion is clean it up. I know one time people wanted a fence in their front yard, the ordinance was against it, they got scared because this woman was a little nasty, and so they passed it, but they didn't clean up their ordinance first, that, first, saying if it's not a safety hazard or blah, 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 they just gave it to her and then tried to clean it up. That, that's just not the way I like to do business. You know, I think, I think cleanup comes first and then, you know, that's my opinion. But anyway, you want to talk?
No, I think you guys have kind of beat it up pretty good.
But not you, beating you up, right?
So, you know, I started approaching this 15 years ago, because we needed a little more room. And, um, you know, I've taken a lot of different angles. I've been through a, a really long list of city managers, and, uh, you know, this time was different because we actually saw that it looked like it could work, we submitted the planning zoning, they did approve it with two conditions, and those are conditions that were permitting. And, um, so, you know, the, uh, the green easement that we're talking about back there, a very, very big piece of property, I would invite both of you guys to come out and walk with me, just to take a look. One of the oldest houses on the block has a fence that goes 90% of the way across that easement, which blocks it so that nobody can get down an easement, because between the trees and the fence that goes across the easement, it's not even really an easement. And there are utilities on it, and it doesn't go anywhere. So in other words, it wouldn't belong in a trail system because it doesn't, it doesn't have a, a pasture. So the easement is, is a strange piece of property that doesn't serve any purpose for the city, and because of it being called an easement, it doesn't serve any purpose for us. And, uh, so if we can't do it this way, I'd like to say I'd like to pursue maybe, without opening Pandora's box, purchasing the easement, or, you know, I've already talked to all the neighbors that touched the easement, and they're all in favor of, you know, I don't know what it is, it's abandoned or purchased right here, or whatever it is. But let's go with the same another way.
So are you suggesting that we table it, that we, do we work out that ordinance or we could...
No, not necessarily tabling this particular thing, but I think a couple of months ago I did bring up maybe looking at the possibility of, um, we have abandoned easements before that we felt were useless to the city. Uh, so, uh, and that would be, if, if we do it in a way like this, to me, then we're doing it correctly. He would then own the property, there wouldn't be anything about contiguous, it would be one complete lot. So, um, I would not have an objection to, uh, us getting advice from the attorney on how we go about that, but I know we have done that before. It's another thing, you're going to open up a box of people wanting to buy all the easements, so an easement's...
With that, with that, if, if we've abandoned easement, with that...
It's not, well, it's not an easement, I mean, it's, it's, you own the land, the public has an easement over the land, the right, to travel over it. So you would be selling, you, you can't abandon the public easement.
I would think so.
You'd be selling, that's the only thing you could do would be...
We've had, we crossed that deal before.
No, that's not...
You'd have to sell, you'd have to sell, vote to sell the land.
And, and that would be my concern is that if you go sell land and ask for an auction and anybody would be up for...
Yes, you'd have to take public, take public...
Is there any language that we could put in the variance request if accepted that's specific to this particular piece of property?
So usually what we'll do is, in, or at least what, what we've done before, previously, was have our divisions that kind of talked about what the variance was and what was concluded in that variance, so at least there's public record of that resolution. But again, you start looking five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, that's kind of where someone's rough, but that, that comes in with anything, contract management, I mean, there's, there's public record of it there, but...
Well, one of the things...
But yet, the issue...
One of the things too with the easements, we think of them because the easements, like Neil said, it's right of passage for the citizens to pass, but it's also there as a vegetative barrier, you know, as a sound barrier, as a, um, between properties, you know, kind of like a fencing type of thing between properties. So our easements out here, and the city didn't form them, the land developer did, which I think had, had a lot of good thought process to it, but, so there's, there's multi-purposes for easements. But it sounds like, Neil, we can't sell it, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying you, you can, it's city property, you can sell it, but you've got to go through the, the steps that's in the statute for the sale of public...
And, and basically, it's, anybody can put them in and for it, and they, Mr. Boney may not get it.
Well, we sold some property to a person who had an issue with their...
That swimming pool?
Yeah, and, yeah, and it was city property, so I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding, was that not an easement? I mean, it's still owned by the city.
So there's different...
I think we did have a variance, did you...
Was there, we actually...
Do we have to cross over that?
There's different situations, because like, there's, you know, there's a property that has like a 10 by 10 or 20 by 20 piece of land, but if it's owned in simple title or pre-simple title, then the city owns it, but if you go on CAD, you can directly see what the city actually has title of, and then when you put on a public easement, there is no reference point because of the public.
I think that, my recollection is in that one, that the city agreed to allow him to maintain the encroachment.
Yeah, that's what we did, we did sell it.
I know specifically, we said to get seller to fair market value.
I think when you're thinking about... Maybe as of where we abandoned the roads.
No, this was a swimming pool that, that, it was not picked up in his title search, he went through all the proper channels for a title search, and part of his pool, pool was over, and it was on the easement, and you, you worked on it with us, Neil.
No, I'm sure I did.
Oh, that was one of the encroachments, that won't say, I know what you got.
The pool, the patio, the pool were encroachments.
It was a ready existence, we were, we were doing that off the out, I mean, when they...
Right, 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 it was to correct a...
But still, it was a sale of property.
Well, and just know with that, uh, one that, like Dalton said, anybody, anybody can buy it, you can't just close it off and say it's only to him. The, and the other thing is, um, over the years, we've had multiple people wanting to buy easements. So I don't know...
Yeah, that's, that's good. We can, I mean, we can look into it just to make sure we have some, you know, bits down. I, I, I think that's a bigger Pandora's box, uh, but we can definitely look at what that would be specific to, but it's just like any sale of property in the city, it goes to auctions, unless it's to another political entity. So really, so in this, so, yeah, so in this, so in this, in this particular, you know, I don't know, yeah, it's really, council, we've got to decide on which conflict to kind of go with. And, and really the precedent that we want to set is...
Right. I agree, I think if there's cleanup, it could be done, if this into some ordinance, they'll need to be done first.
So, so I think there's two things.
Not like 15 years.
Well, and, and I guess, you know, from, from the staff kind of standpoint, so what cleanup would council like? What direction do we want to clean up? Do we want to clean up where contiguous is in line with abut, adjacent, or do we not?
I mean, I, I think we need the advice of our attorney on what he believes is the definition of contiguous by, you know, state law. I mean, we're, state law takes precedence over anything we do or we write.
What I tell you is contiguous is what I think the general understanding of it is, but you can define a word in the ordinance to mean what you want it to.
Well, we have it two different ways, that's the problem. So that's part of the cleanup. That's part of the cleanup.
Is there a way to legally tie that lot with the building in with the presence that he lived in?
Well, you can't, you can't, well, if they were, you know, if they were adjoining, you could have him plot it, that is one route, and that would be the solution, but obviously we did this, we can't do that here.
And, and you still, we still have, we still have the ordinance that talks about the buildings being on the main, where a main dwelling is. And so this is also, like Dalton said, first, no, because it's not on the main dwelling. So we're, we're looking at two different things, and, and I don't know that we want to, I mean, that's something for, I guess, all of us to discuss. In my opinion, we don't want to change that because then you're going to have outbuildings, accessory buildings, you know, where my next door neighbor, I'd like to have a next door neighbor living in a house, and now I've got this huge accessory building sitting there, and my neighbor lives across the street or lives behind me or whatever. I mean, to me, that's kind of not what the residents of Morgue's Point want. I think they kind of want it to be a neighborhood with homes next door to them and not accessory buildings. And, and I realize one thing, you said yours is isolated, and I've seen it, it's isolated...
It's isolated, and I've also got all the adjoining property neighbors assigned, whatever standard they post today.
Yeah, but, but the problem is property changes, that's kind of my thing. And I guess, and owners change, and, uh, just like the property next to us was a vacant lot, lots of trees, we had lots of privacy, nobody could see in our backyard, whatever. Well, of course, we knew this was eventually coming, they built a big place, all the trees came down, we have no privacy, dah 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 dah, and, um, he's putting a big old building up there. Anyway, the bottom line is things change, and we can't go on, this is the appearance of it today, you know, you have to say, okay, down the line, and we're not going to stick with the same owners. It's not always going to be Mr. Boney owning this place, it's not always going to be his neighbors in the neighborhood. And my concern is we're, we're kind of violating two trains of thoughts that our city goes with. I think it makes it very difficult for our staff to try to, as much as we want to work with people, and we do, and I, I'm sure Mr. Boney realizes that, because this discussion could have been over in five minutes and we've spent 20, so you know how this tugs at us trying to do the right thing. But I think at this point, um, and, and I guess if I have to be the one to take a hard line, I would say that at this point, um, I, I just feel that it violates too many of the ordinances that we have in place. And so I, I think at this point...
I think what we're looking at right here, we're not going to stop this, you sit here and table tonight, I think we need to take a vote on it or table it and just come back with the suggestion, and either one, we all have to talk it with, uh, Dalton and tell him which way we want to go. But we can sit here and vote right in the dark all night.
That's, that's kind of what I was doing, is getting a motion. I was about to make a motion.
Okay, I'm all...
My motions are, are never, they're never short, you know that, Dennis.
Good idea.
So at this point, um, I feel we need to deny the variance on the property.
Okay, vote, there is a motion to deny, you made a motion to deny the variance?
Mm-hmm, it is requested.
I'm going to put it to a vote.
Is there any, I mean, denying?
So that's about 20 feet...
Just because it's denied tonight does not mean a month later he can't bring it back up.
There's an appeals process too, but...
Absolutely.
But what, what this, what this puts the direction of staff into is saying, if we're denying it, it's that we, we obviously see the conflict within, in the ordinance, and in that way we can then now present to DNC and council again the revised definitions of what contiguous is, adjacent is, abut is, and then start cleaning it up from there. And then in the future, if those ordinances fall in line with other projects, then, then they can come back. And a great example of that is, um, I can't remember the name, Smooth Point, but they had a garage issue that the old ordinance, you know, got it denied, they came back with an updated ordinance, and they were able to get it approved. And so, so I, I think by, by table it, it makes things more complicated if we jump in the direction, by making a decision, yea or nay, whichever direction council goes, and I know a motion's on the table currently, um, that puts us in motion on, on the direction that, that we need to start...
And I'll add to my motion if the staff wants to do further review on these, that we would, the staff do some further review.
I want to see some follow-up on this, you know, if we vote to deny it, then, then obviously we want to see somebody taking this ball and running with it, um, you know, if you can table it, obviously it can be brought back up for discussion.
Yeah, I, no, I, for, for staff's perspective, as soon as the motion's made, whatever direction council goes, that tells us where we need to start cleaning things up, that we can then present DNC and then to council on a later day. So that, but the ball will be taken and, and run with it, you know, this time and, and anytime in the future.
Blake, on that comment, I'll say.
There's a motion by Donna, second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Ready to vote? Motion carries. And now, do you feel like you've got a direction to go in, Dalton? Do you feel like you've got a direction that you want, we need to go to?
Absolutely.
We need to give these gentlemen some answers.
No, I, I, and I, and I think...
Your answer was no. For now.
No, yeah, and I think to the, to the point of Mr. Boney, I mean, I think this is sometimes where we don't want to kick the proverbial hand down the road, you know, we know that things can change and, and that they can prove or go a different direction, and I think now, you know, this gives us some direction that staff can start working with, and then we can start opening discussions, you know, more specifically towards ordinances and not just for the, you know, Mr. Boney's property.
Okay, let me tell you, there's, in section, it's 271 of, 272.001 of Local Government Code, you are allowed to sell, and you can sell narrow strips of land or land that because of its shape, lack of access to public roads, or small area cannot be used independently under its current zoning or under applicable subdivision or other development control ordinances. And you can sell it to an adjoining property owner, and it has to be sold for, for current, you know, reasonable market value.
Market value.
So if you were, I think you think that there is a, in this, under this ordinance or in this, uh, Local Government Code, if you were to determine, I think that's what we've used in the past, is that if you determine that it fits the definition of the statute, then if council wanted to, it could sell some portion of, of that.
Nobody would apply to a piece of property, do you think, is the idea, I mean, it's too there for anything to be built on it?
Before we open this can of worms, and this is something, another direction that staff can go down. If, and, and again, I think it can be reasonable, but then the number one question that staff already has, even without anything, is how do we fairly split up? Because who then pays for the survey to then split that up? Do we have Mr. Boni paid on what he thinks should be the survey boundary? Or is the city going to go in for, in for every single request of potential sale of easement? Does the city fork it up so we can truly define what those boundaries are?
No, I can, I can tell you that, that, that whenever we've sold property, we have always said that, that there'd be zero expenses to the city or the citizens.
No, I, I agree, but I'm, I'm just saying that, so, so then if we say, if, if council at a point in time in later, later date said, hey, Mr. Boni, you do a survey on the property and he's like, I'm not doing anything. I want to buy the whole damn easement. Obviously, that could be, you know, be no, but, but again, so, so I think it's, at, at a certain point, you know, being in the best interest of the community. And we say, hey, Mr. Boni, you know, you pay for the survey, you pay for this. Are we doing a due diligence by kind of leaving the ball in their court without really some direction on, on how do we split? I, I think there would have to be maybe a potential workshop on, in planning on saying, how do we divide those parcels up to be able to say, hey, this is what our thoughts are. Now you need to go do a survey and then present it to it. But what I don't, what I would not recommend from staff perspective and in the best interest of the community is you start having people that are wanting to buy and, and putting in, you know, money for surveys, you know, you know, thousand, twenty-three hundred dollars a pop, and then they start getting denied. And so I, I think there's another Pandora's box that.
We, we got the motion to not turn down.
So we have some.
You don't think that's the way to go, then what?
Well, we'll do some research and have a more.
Do whatever you think on there. But go on to the next, go on to the next, you're dialed. Sorry. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Boni. Okay, Larry, we're going down to yours quick. Here now is item number, uh, item number eight is, uh, is Resolution twenty-one back nineteen, it's a FM twenty-four eighty-three speed limit.
So this one, um, and thank you, Neil, for, for, you know, definitely calling me on, on this one. So this is not an ordinance for us to change the speed limit. Uh, we had a conversation with Tech stocks recently, um, went through some agenda items. One of their agenda items that they told us was that they identified that that fifty-five mile an hour speed limit on twenty-four eighty-three is not good. And that they want, that he's going to, uh, Stephen, our, our engineer, is going to present it to the transportation department to make that change. This resolution is just a resolution from the governing body, um, uh, aligning with our citizens' complaints and suggestions on getting that reduced to a more comparable.
So we know what speed your motion.
I, I'm gonna assume, I don't know yet, I'm gonna assume it's forty, just because both, both ends of that are forty. I, I suspect that they're just going to use it. But that I don't know for sure, but we'll be in communication.
I understand that we're just, we're aligned with the.
Just, yeah, just a letter of support. So, so this, this, this will change it. There's still going to be a process to this. So this just lets the governing body and tech side know that our residents support this.
Okay. Uh, your motion.
I make a motion.
Tom, you second?
Second.
Tom, second. In favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Ronnie, thank you. Yeah, Larry, also, uh, you know, kind of getting back into Dalton, he's talking to, uh, the department. There are, I mean, there's some.
I'll, I'll do it, I'll do it quick, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay, okay, we'll get to it then. Is that okay? I'll let you on in here. Okay, then we're getting down to the, now we're getting into the real meat. Uh, we have council members in the room for a long time and, uh, he decided to move on to different things. And he's asked us to accept his resignation. No, stand up so we can watch you lift it.
That's why I wanted to do this thing.
Uh-oh.
Thank y'all for voting for me and I swear, I swear, I tried hard. I, I hit the streets. I talked to people. I studied this. I feel like I put my time in and I served everybody the best I could. Thank y'all.
All right, good, my sticky notes. Oh, leave a sticky note on there. So in the good name of my misspelling of your name with I E instead of Y.
I do this too.
So we're gonna have to get a new sign, but I had to put a sticky note that said Ronnie with the Y instead of the I E. But we're gonna get that fixed for you. And, um, we definitely appreciate your service and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you for your, thank you.
Thank y'all. It's been fun and entertaining.
Under our deal about volunteers, uh, as we are all volunteers up there, the pay is about extremely. They'll do it for the pay. We do it for, for the citizens and, uh, Ronnie's done it quite, about four years, not five years.
Five, about four and five.
So thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it.
And to be clear, there is no, uh, council.
Now we're gonna go to, uh, any part. Oh, that's why we actually got the votes accepted.
Well, we don't want to accept it.
By state law, or eight days later.
I don't know what happens if nobody votes for it.
Eight, eight days later, it's automatically accepted by state law.
Oh, no, okay, so we don't have a choice.
Is there a motion? You can't vote, you can't make it right now.
I'll make a motion to be accepted, Ronnie's presentation.
My friend will.
Oh, okay.
I'll live for eight days.
All of the time, just all in favor, who do all willing to accept it, okay, but if that one. Am I here to vote? Anybody opposed?
Yeah, I would oppose, but for all the good it does, right?
We were going the other way, so, uh, nobody was opposed, so we're gonna do this back.
May, may I just say one thing? I've served on the council for over thirty years and I've served with many wonderful men and women on the city council. And I'm telling you, this is the most passionate council person I have ever served with. He is honest. He has integrity. He has compassion for our citizens. He uses good common sense. And he has worked his heart, put his heart and soul into this for all the citizens of Mortgage Point. And nobody knows all the behind the scenes that Ronnie does for y'all. He just doesn't sit up here and talk a lot like I do. I like that too. You talk as much as I do. But anyway, this is a wonderful council person. If you've got a time individually to thank him, I wish you would. Because he has been one of the most honorable, passionate men I've ever served with.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go into, are there any, give your report, or other?
So, quick update on Tech stock. So we had a great, uh, kind of introductory conversation with Tech stock. Talked about the speed limit. That's, that's one thing being addressed. One thing's, one thing, thing, that's, one thing Tech stock is working on. Um, they're working on their four-year strategic plan. One of their items that they want to or trying to put into the four-year strategic plan is the twenty-four eighty-three expansion, whatever that looks like. Um, we don't have any high level plans yet. There's nothing on the table. Uh, just to mention that twenty-four eighty-three is in Tech stock's sights to potentially expand it from the high school all the way to the downtown or to the intersection. Um, we'll be having some more information on that with some more letters of support, some community stuff to try to really, you know, positively encourage Tech stock to get that onto their strategic plan since it is on the lower end of their priority list. But I thought that was great that they're even talking about that. That's, that's awesome. And so we'll, we'll have some more stuff on that. Some of the things we're also looking at is trying to figure out what a study would look like for that intersection. Uh, we are bringing that back to the table to kind of figure out how a study would, would, would look, what, what we need to put there, what options do we have for traffic flow, traffic study, et cetera. So that's all I got on that one. It's, it's being addressed and we're gonna continue the conversations, you know, with them about that. The other question that we need to talk to, we're just waiting on some answers, at least in kind of, we'll call it the intermediary, is to retrofit the current stop signs with the solar kind of LED flashing ones that at least provide some, just some visual recognition when, when people are driving. Um, and kind of see how that goes. So Tech stock hasn't confirmed or denied it yet. It'll, we'll obviously have to pay for it. So we'll figure that out and then, and then it'll be Tech stock's responsibility, but more information. But overall, great conversation. Um, had a conversation with, uh, Belt and ISB, Jill Ross and Nat Smith. So they're, we're really trying to, you know, work on some, uh, partnerships together with, you know, sidewalks, with, you know, safety of the kids. So those are going to be ongoing, um, kind of more to follow on, on those projects. Uh, let's see. Uh, really, it's kind of internal staff wise, something that we've really focused on for September is kind of staff professional development. I've only have been, uh, with Kerry's great help in doing his finance guru stuff. Uh, I've been actually able to sit down with all the employees individually, kind of go through professional development, kind of what they want to do, where they want to be. Uh, so that's been, been a great opportunity to kind of just get different perspectives, you know, of our team and, and some of their individual passions, professional career passions. Um, as we know, the labor market's really tough and so, you know, having some team engagement is important. Uh, so I, I've been, been glad and were able to do that, pretty much spending all of September, uh, going through and talking with every single employee. Uh, PD's been doing great. Uh, we won't go much into that, but let's just say they've been, they've been doing a wonderful job and really cracking down on some things. And we definitely appreciate that.
We do. Todd? I know. That's on my list too. She's been waiting patiently for this moment.
So for those who know, there'll be almost ten matches between the case of wire wreck. Uh, we have hired a full-time employee, um, and she joins us with not much experience, but with previous experience from the city of Temple. So, uh, if y'all will welcome, this is McKenna Tivitt. She's our full-time. Welcome aboard.
We're so happy to have you.
And she does not like speeches, so if y'all want a speech from her, please ask her.
We won't put you on the spot like that. Or she's even got the pose. She's got that. I like that. That's pretty good. You do that now when you pull us over, hi. Well, welcome to the city. We're, we've got wonderful citizens out here. You're gonna love it.
I live in the city.
Okay, great.
I've lived here for four years.
Super. So you, you know us.
Awesome.
Well, good.
Good. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Any, any other report?
I've, I've got the auxiliary reports.
Anybody from the council? So we'll go here.
Okay, and, and, um, also, uh, let's see. I think Taryn had to leave. I'm sure he's got training, but they had two promotions. Uh, Captain Tony Woolard, who's been with our fire department, I think, longer than I've lived in the city. He was promoted and also Will Velazquez was promoted. So we had two great promotions in our fire department, which was always wonderful. And Landem Grissette again, he went and he got his sea water license. Now he has a seawater and wastewater. So we want to really encourage this young man and let him know how much we appreciate him. And, uh, okay, so this is the auxiliary report. And, uh, the Miss Flame contest is coming up and they have applications, uh, and they're due by September twenty-fourth. So if you know anyone, I think it's like sophomores and juniors, right, uh, can apply. Uh, cops and robbers, that really cool thing that they do with the chili thing, that's been postponed. A lot of people a little nervous about COVID and kind of getting together in groups, so that's been postponed. Um, did you want to, Lynn, did you want to talk about your, okay?
Well, for auxiliary or for cops?
Uh, for the cops. The, uh, holiday extravaganza is up.
I'm president of NPR Cops Organization. Uh, yes, first I want to say, we had, um, a meeting slash pool party for police officers and their families and the rest, I mean, others, us, the people that are on the cops. And I would like to thank the mayor for coming down and joining us.
All right, all right.
He thanked us for what we were doing and it's really been a lot of all of us. And I was shocked. I looked up to the mayor, but, but.
Hey, pretty special. Where were our invitations? Do we get, no! I show up to every party, so does Ronnie. We love parties.
That was great.
Did you join cops?
No, I didn't.
Uh, October, the first thing is October the ninth, in, uh, the fellowship, in conjunction with Fellowship Baptist Church in their parking lot, we are going to have a free holiday kickoff to the holiday resort.
Has nothing to do with them.
And, uh, we, we are renting booth spaces to people that, I don't know, say you make wreaths or you do whatever you do, you know, and whatever. And, uh, in conjunction, the ladies from the church are going to be inside of a garage seat, so we're hoping that generates a lot of traffic, a foot traffic.
What, what time is this, is already coming?
It starts at eight AM to three.
Eight to three, that's on the night.
On the night, Saturday the night. And, uh, we've got on the website, GMM has so kind to put it on the website for us. And I think my phone number's on there, somebody that if you want to get, uh, if you know somebody that wants to participate in rental booth, you know, they just have to fill out some forms, they'll give us twenty-five bucks and there we go. Uh, October this fifteenth and sixteenth is our Memorial Tom Nipper Barbecue Cook Off. And it's gonna be at Anse Park. And we're looking to have a lot, and we also, that is also a scholarship program. We give away a thousand dollar scholarship to a senior that is going into criminal justice. So if anybody is interested in good food or hanging out and having a good time, uh, we'll, we got, some of the guys and gals will be there. And, uh, it, that would be a really good thing over at Anse Park. And it's for a great cause. And it is a Texas sanctioned event. So CTPPA, so that's a really good thing too. So we should have a lot of traffic for that. And then the last one that we've decided is, last year, we, since all the COVID cut off all the, uh, different things that the city always does for the kids here, we have the first annual Trump Retreat, NPR Cops. And we joined with the, the Fellowship Baptist Church. We decided to do it again this year because I know it's worse this year than it was last year. And so, uh, we're doing it again, Trump Retreat. It's gonna be the thirtieth, uh, October the thirtieth. In, once again, Fellowship's parking lot. I've already contacted Chief Klein. He's gonna do hot dogs again. I'm talking to Taryn, uh, Chief Essels, and he's gonna bring out a, a truck and just like they had for last year. And then, uh, Chief Klein's gonna have one of the guys, I think it's worth doing it again. He's, he did a fabulous job last year. Um, the, one of the trunks will be a police trunk. And then one will be NPR Cops. And anybody who wants to do that, there, it's also on the website because you, you have to fill out a form and everything. So we all want this, you know, random, you know, near new wells coming up. You can try them, you know, with the kids. But, uh, so we're gonna have hot dogs. Last year we had eight hundred people.
Wow.
Eight hundred. I never saw so many people in my life and I never thought they were gonna stop. And they just kept coming. The line never went down. It just kept going and going and going. And it, it was fabulous. I mean, we had a great time. Their faces looked, they were so lit up and they were, it was like the first time they'd been out in, I think, almost eight months, something like that.
Yeah.
Ten months. It was great. It was really great. So we're looking forward to doing it again. And because the city, I mean, because the COVID is like it is now too, the city has already offered to help us. Uh, they helped last year, but they've also decided to join in with us too, and they are gonna help us as well. So the city will be behind you. Awesome.
Thank y'all very much. We would y'all do. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we do appreciate you. Senior Expo?
Oh, yeah. Um, we got a senior expo out at the expo center on, oh. It's, do you know what I, auxiliary, I don't, you know, I don't want to make it, say it off the top of my head.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth from eight-thirty to noon.
Yeah, and we'll have a booth for the cops.
September, I'm sorry, September twenty-eighth.
September twenty.
And we'll have a booth for the cops and then there'll also be one for ladies auxiliary. And we're giving out, the, the theme this year is pirates. So we've got a little, you know, pirate, sort of decorations with the table and all that stuff. So it's gonna be a good time.
All right. And then the rest of Karen's report is encouraging people to come to city council meetings. If you can't make the meetings, she encourages people to go to YouTube and to follow the, uh, ladies auxiliary. Cops is on there too. Fire department, you know, we have some wonderful, uh, Facebook presentations for our city. And they, they did elect new officers. The president is gonna be Karen Steigner. Lynn is the first vice president. Judy Dillon's the second. Ashley Larson's secretary. Rebecca Hutton's treasurer. Parliamentarian is Mary Shockley. Historian is Charlene Karaholt. I, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right. And then their board members are Linda Morris, Cindy Capps, Lynn Zimmerman and Jeanette Grabman. So anyway, congratulations to them. We're excited to have you and Karen back.
Don, if you have anything else, September twenty eighth on the senior candidates.
Senior Expo, September, Bell County.
Yes, the seniors.
Yeah, Tuesday, September twenty eighth, eight-thirty to noon. Okay.
Don, if you have any other, anything else?
That's it.
Tom?
The barbecue cookoff, is that open to the public?
Oh, yes.
I mean, but there's, there will, you know, there will, you know, selling of food. I mean, where we won't, do you have, they can't buy their barbecue. That's prickling for context. We won't have any dinners for. for buying.
Are they doing a band?
Well, we are going to do a back, we're going to do breakfast cocktails on the morning of 16th, and we're going to do hamburgers the night of 15th, go around and take orders and we're going to put them, suckers ourselves in these little little brown bags, all of that.
Ronnie, do you have any warning?
No, I just want to tell y'all, we're the best group of guys, five years, and girls, that, we chilled, yo, I've been here for the first year, I remember it was tension, Green was here, it was like a little tension between, this is the chilliest group of people and I, being gone, I still got my trust in what these guys say and do, so thank y'all.
We appreciate you.
Bobby? Ruth? Any warning, Ron? Folks, thank y'all for being here and staying in touch with us. Dalton does the coffee with manager, city manager, every Friday morning. We're going to start, I think he has good plans to maybe start cooperating that with some of the department heads, so there's always going to be good information. So anyway, if you can make this Friday deal, and we may even try to put a Saturday meeting in there throughout the, throughout the year for people that can't make it here on a Friday, so maybe they can make it on a Saturday. But, you know, there's no reason, and if you have neighbors that have a question, bring us, bring us with us or have them bring it to us or you bring it to us. There's no reason people need to go on Facebook and start rumors without, I mean, when there's too much information, they could be started, be done right here and we can nip in the bud. But, you know, rumors, rumors have intensity growing, the more they grow, the worse they get. And we'd rather nip in the bud, as you say, and there's reasons we're having this information. And thank y'all for being here because you're so concerned, we thank y'all. If there's nothing else, I'm going to move, will you adjourn?
I may, we adjourn.
Second?